Good afternoon. It's now five thirty. I'd like to call the Calhoun County Council, February thirteenth.
Let's pray. Lord, this meeting has occurred because we want to do good for your kingdom. I pray that we do not grow weary while doing this good thing, for in due time we shall reap if we do not lose heart. I believe that you will guide us in this meeting so that results can be seen days, months, and even years after today. We come expecting to make a mark on this earth that is significant, but we can only do it with your guidance. Amen.
Amen. Right now, I accept the motion for approval of the agenda.
Subway.
Second.
Bobby move to second. Any further discussion? All who pay aye.
Aye.
Votes likewise. John, did you have the public comments on the agenda?
I do. Mr. Bobby Temple?
Yes.
I see we have a, Bobby Temple is coming to the empty crowd, and comments are limited to three minutes and a half an hour. So we, we hope we get there. I don't know how long the, uh...
Limited to three minutes and a half hour?
It's right.
Yeah, sir, we got it out of perspective. Three minutes, my tone was a half hour. The total thing is for, let me explain to you good then, the total thing is for a half an hour, okay? Hope you got it.
I got it.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you for hearing me and all of us here today. You, you people have got a, a hard job, and I think it's gonna get harder with the things that are changing in this world, and I wanted to thank you for hearing me and considering the things that I have to say. I live in Fort Mott. I found Fort Mott about twenty-five years ago when I rode up across six oh one, across the Congaree River, and burst out into a beautiful farmland on left and right as far as you could see. Cotton, white cotton floating like an ocean of whiteness across the way. And in the, in the springtime, corn doing the same thing. It's just a breathtaking place. And I think the, uh, the, the land along six oh one between the Congaree River and St. Matthews is the prettiest land in the county, and we should avoid anything that would take away from the vista that lies there. It's our agricultural foundation. Uh, we in Fort Mott, uh, have heard there's rumor afoot that there's a significant land owner, and by that I mean a significant tract of land that's, that's planning to negotiate or talking with, at minimum, with a, uh, with a solar farm developer. And we just wanna take this opportunity to, uh, I wanna take this opportunity to beg you to please put a moratorium up and to stock any solar farm development until it can be studied further. We know it's cunning. It's pressure on us all to put, uh, uh, clean power generation up. But please put a moratorium up until it can be studied carefully, and an ordinance can be drawn up, either on behalf of Calhoun County, on behalf of a ca- a region, a close by region that might consist of Calhoun County, Sunkitt County, et cetera. You know, there's one that's just gone up in, um, in Richland County, and they don't have good leadership there, and this thing just jumped up. It's six or eight hundred acres that goes from Van Boken Road, just falls down to the Wadbury River. And it's the most terrible. It was a beautiful piece of farmland. It had some pittics in there, and now it's just a isle. And what's gonna happen when these things degrade? Who's gonna take them out? Uh, they're thirty-year leases. These land developers, uh, the solar farm developers, right, they amortize their cost over thirty years, but they're paying extraordinary rates to the landowners. They're paying, a farmer told me, he had it on good account from a good farmer, that the rates that landowners are receiving for solar land leases are ten times what they can receive for a agricultural land lease, on the same, same land. So please table it until we can get it studied and made a part of an ordinance that can be, uh, that can be used to stipulate which tracts of land can be used for solar cells and which cannot. Am I, am I at the end of mine?
There you go.
Yes, sir.
Three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Let me explain. I, I set my phone three minutes. I don't start it until you start talking. So if you wanna stand up there and look for your phone. Well, I mean, I don't, I don't know about you, okay, but I'm, I'm, but I like to say that's where it's, it, it works, so.
Uh, Mr. Rhett Taber.
Hello. Thank you all for giving me this opportunity. I'm Rhett Taber from also from Fort Mott. I didn't know what my business was saying. It covered a lot of what else to say, so mine's gonna be real short. I think it's very important to show this pause on these solar farms until we can get this comprehensive plan that the county is planning on doing in the next year, I think, and plan on doing the rezoning and listen to the citizens from each community as how they want their community developed. I think the county needs to do a better job of getting this word out about this comprehensive plan. I think very few people knew that this form is to be filled out and sent back into the county. Either they can go online and fill it out, so I think we need to do a better job of getting word out about this. But, uh, please halt this until we can, um, get our rezoning done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Amy Hill?
I promise to be short and brief. Thank you all for letting us speak tonight. Um, I have provided this solar panel informative paper from DHEC to Richard to give to each one of you, and I want you to pay close attention, or please review it on page two. Uh, these, these solar panels may contain hazardous materials such as lead, almost guaranteed. And, um, don't know how to say some of these other words, but, um, you can't even dump them in county sites or landfills without them being tested. They have to grind the glass and do all kinds of stuff to send it off and test it, and there's not even any sites close by here. I know we don't take them. I don't think we do. If we do, that's a problem, but I don't believe we do. Um, but please pay attention to this because if we're going to do something in the 2024 plan, we need to make sure that farmers are well informed of the hazards and the toxins that are raised within these, particularly the ones from China. Um, they do have lead in the welding and, and some toxic material in the glass that they have to grind it and test it to make sure before they're even allowed to be dumped. Um, it is a possibility that a solar farm company would write into the contract that they, they're gonna take care of it and dispose of them, but what happens if they go out of business or go bankrupt or something? That falls on the farmers, and then it goes into our landfills, which could possibly, and nobody can sit here and say definitely no, but it could create super farm sites that were not repaired financially to pay for. So the other thing to consider is lowering property values of the surrounding areas if they wanna sell their land. Um, if someone sees an eyesore such as a solar panel farm that's not really regulated or just crammed in there, it will lower the value of your neighbor's property. So I want you guys to consider all of this and look at this. This is a pretty good comprehensive information sheet that DHEC put together. So it's with Richard. Please do review it, and thank you for your time.
Ms. Janet Eccles?
Thank you for the opportunity to, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I, um, live in St. Matthews, uh, but I'm the pastor of a rural church, um, in, um, out in the countryside in the middle of Cottonville, and I'd, um, like to ask for a moratorium on the solar farms in Calhoun County until the two thousand twenty-four comprehensive study can be completed. I've spent the last week talking to neighbors and studying about solar farms, and two images have continued to resonate in my brain over the past week. The first is, um, low-income residents of, uh, rural Georgetown County, and the second is a satellite image from Calhoun County of a family home. In both cases, these families are severely negatively affected by solar projects. For these families, where they once were surrounded by forests and fields and wildlife freely roaming around about them, now their property, their properties are islands in a gla- in a sea of glass and plastic and metal, and the value of these family homes are now a fraction of their pre-solar value. The solar projects in rural communities disproportionately affect low-income families whose ancestral homes will be swallowed up by the project, whose generational wealth, generational wealth and heritage will be forever lost. One may say, why don't they just move? Well, even if they wanted to relocate for a better life, who would be willing to pay the pre-, uh, the previous fair market value for these low-income homes? According to the University of North Carolina State University, litigation over diminished property value in and around solar projects are growing every year. And in the spirit of Ron Motley, I'd have to say that's just around the corner for us. As, um, as one Georgetown resident put it, we don't live in mansions. Solar panel projects are not being built in affluent subdivisions. Are these large landowners and solar corporate people willing to surround their own homes with chain-linked fences and solar panels? It is the rural poor that are being disproportionately disadvantaged and losing generational wealth while the solar industry disregards the property rights of the poor and the needs of the community. I'd like to end this by quoting scripture, "Love your neighbor as yourself."
Good job, sir.
This is not a show. I wish the audience would hold applause for this, that everybody's speaking, everybody's speaking. I can't tell me any more than you guys can say, so I just, John, the next one.
Mr. Francis Mack?
Well, thank everyone, and being a lawyer, you're following a preacher. I'm here in the Fort Mott area. I grew up in the San Yarone area. I am a lifelong seventy-three-year resident of Calhoun County. I care about Calhoun County. As a lawyer, I was trained and taught that words are important. The solar projects you're talking about are not farms. It's important that they be viewed. They are solar arrays. They are an industrial application, and they should be located accordingly, and they should wait for a countywide development plan. Where's it appropriate for industrial applications to go? Again, they are not farms. It's misleading to call them farms. Now, just a few brief points. Ms. Hill brought up the fact there will be some tax benefit when they're built, but there will be negative effects on the surrounding property. There will be loss in property values, which causes decrease in property taxes, and that effect will go on for twenty, thirty, for fifty years. I'm concerned about my children and grandchildren. I won't be here in fifty years, but I hope to have grandchildren here in fifty years. There's the issue, and I know there's a lot of pressure, even coming down from the federal level. We want solar for environmental, for the environmental benefits. There is a lot more environmental benefits to planting trees instead of putting up glass panels and steel. The trees will absorb the carbon dioxide. They'll sequester it. There is a net positive. It's much more effective to plant trees than to plant glass. This is a countywide issue. It's kind of coming to a head, uh, right now, maybe for the Fort Mott area, and all I've heard is rumors. I don't know what is actually going on, but it's a countywide issue, not just a Fort Mott issue. Again, I grew up in San Yarone, went swimming in San Yarone Creek. I care about Calhoun County, and that's why I live here. Thank you.
Good job, sir.
Mr. Jake Watkins?
Oh, thank you. I'm Jake Watkins, St. Matthew's resident and Fort Mott landowner, and I guess I have the unenviable task of following both the...
Preach the preacher and another.
I was totally unaware of this particular proposal, uh, a week ago. We'd had this conversation last Monday, and I'd heard of it. It was only Tuesday that, uh, that I became aware of the proposal. And I'd like to think that I'm, uh, an advocate of, uh, of planning. Uh, I had attended the Planning Commission meeting back in, I believe it was in November, anticipating that I was gonna hear a public hearing, but, uh, I think that public hearing didn't materialize that particular evening, but, uh, the, uh, the Comprehensive Planning Consultant, Mr. Gardner, gave a, a review of the first two elements of the Comprehensive Plan at that particular meeting. So I had signed that evening, asking to be notified of, uh, the ongoing meetings and such pertaining to the Comprehensive Planning process. Somehow or other, uh, the word didn't quite reach me about the January meeting, but I did, uh, get the word just in time to, uh, to attend the, uh, the January meeting of the Planning Commission, and which input was invited for the, uh, uh, the land use element of the Comprehensive Plan. So, uh, again, I'm very, uh, very intend- intend fully to be participating, uh, in the input for that land use element, to be followed by the cultural resources element, to be followed by the natural resources element. So I echo the sentiments that others have expressed this evening about, uh, let's proceed through the, uh, the planning process. It's been nominally ten years since the, uh, the last update. Times have changed. Circumstances change. I would share the sentiment that others have expressed this evening, that let's, uh, participate actively in the Comprehensive Planning process. So let's see what emerges from that. To my understanding, the county does intend to do zoning, uh, to a greater degree than, uh, than now exists. The rural undeveloped category seems to have great flexibility to allow many activities, and not all of which would be considered compatible one with another. So, uh, that would be my request to you to, as others have expressed this evening, let's, uh, work our way through the, uh, the planning process here and see what, uh, what sort of bug emerges at the end of that process. I'm here to bring you the break.
Mr. Wagner?
Gentlemen, if you would look at the packet that I gave to you so that, there's several things that I'm probably not gonna get to that are highlighted in several pages there, and I knew I only had three minutes, so I gave you a copy of that for you to look through and so that you would have the facts before you. Now, let's review the science in solar energy, and when we talk about solar energy, we're usually talking about either windmills or the solar panels. The solar panels are, uh, really large in the south because we have so much sun. Solar panels and solar energy will never completely replace our, our energy need. The power plant has to provide enough power for everyone to run all of their electronics on a cloudy day, on a cold day, on a snowy day, on a still hot day. Solar energy is only a substitute to help us reduce the power energy cost or to reduce the carbon emissions. So solar energy has become, um, the big favorite of, um, maybe, maybe I can say, big government or big planners. Um, and they're, they're saying that solar energy is gonna be so wonderful, but as you homeowners know, if you're gonna put solar energy on your house, it's gonna cost you thousands and thousands of dollars, and they timeframe it over twenty to thirty years for the payback, by which time it, they didn't tell you, it's broken. The problem with solar panels is that they are breaking down, and almost all of them are made in China, and China is sending their trash in the form of glass and giving us solar panels that they are glad to get rid of in China, and they know they're not going to last. It reminds me of some little device that you have in your house that you bought, and it says right on the bottom, "Made in China," and after you've had it a little while, from Christmas to now, it's now broken. And I look at the bottom, and I say, there's a bunch of Chinese people that are laughing at us because we bought their junk. Solar energy is only a substitute. It will never provide all the power that we need. The electric company has to provide an energy power source that covers everybody at all times, so their solar energy or their wind energy is only to reduce their power, which really makes you wonder, are they really saving money? If it wasn't for the government providing all the money to put in these solar panels and to buy them and to keep them, we couldn't afford it. It's not making any money. The other question that, this article that I gave to you, which is from Harvard Business Review...
Pass the wagon.
Yes, sir. Oh, boy, I didn't even hear the good, the little bell.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, sir. So I would ask you to read through this and notice that the one thing that it says at the very end is that before we pick up any more solar energy, we need to have a concise way of getting rid of solar trash.
Thank you. John, do we have anybody in the public comments on other matters?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now we can public hearing on ordinance twenty-two-two-two-six, third reading, and ordinance to amend chapter two, article four, with respect to various boards and commissions. Uh, anyone have any comments or questions? On our ordinance twenty-two-two-two-six. Hearing done. Ordinance twenty-two-two-two-six, third reading is closed. We have a motion for approval of ordinance twenty-two-two-two-six.
Subway, second.
Bobby move to second. Any further discussion? All who pay aye.
Aye.
Votes likewise, ayes have it. Motion for approval of, uh, minutes of, uh, twenty, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
Subway, fifty.
Second.
Bobby move to second. Any further discussion? All who pay aye.
Aye.
Votes likewise, ayes have it. Uh, any committee reports? Any appointments? Anyone have any appointments? Your partner's coming from, well, uh, the chairman will appoint the standing committees. Uh, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three standing committees. Administration and Finance, James Baker, chairman, and Ken Westbury is a member of that committee. Public Service and County Planning, Richard Carson is the chairman, and Ken Westbury served him on that committee. Issuary, Susan Lord Jr. is the chairman, and Rebecca Bonifat will serve him on that committee. Education and Recreation, Health and Welfare, Ken Westbury is chairman, and James Baker will serve him on that committee. Natural Resources and Development, Rebecca Bonifat is the chair, and Richard Carson will serve her on that committee. That's outstanding committee, twenty, twenty-three.
Do we need a motion, sir?
No. Chairman's automatically appointed. No approximation. As appearances, we have smart brickman. Any sales tax updates?
Afternoon, everybody. Afternoon. Here to give you an update on Calhoun County pin sales tax projects. First one will be the Calhoun County Cameron and St. Matthew's borderline breach. It's still in the development stages and routing and getting right of ways for the land, and we have additional funding from appropriations pending, a ten and a half million dollar amount. That's a pending for federal appropriations. Cameron Historical Depot. The RFP is under construction. It's being drafted and put out for bid. They're going through the building right now, looking at some structural, what's good and what's not, to determine what needs to be replaced, so that's will be out for bid coming shortly. There's a, a tax, a conceptual drawing of Cameron Depot that you'll have. Sandy Run Fire District and Substation. The architectural layout is in progress, about forty-five percent complete, and that will determine where the substation best designed for the land that we have used for it. The ladder truck, the RFP is ready, and we're going to put out and get amounts on it, but that's, that ladder truck is dependent upon the substation because of space. We have no way else to put, to part the ladder truck without that substation in Sandy Run. St. Matthew's demolition. You, you have the dialysis completed, St. Matthew's High School completed, the other, some other demolition of houses along Bridge Street. We're waiting on asbestos reports to come back before they begin demolition. They have bids already received, and they're just waiting on reports for asbestos. St. Matthew's Lake Inspiration, that project is fifty percent complete, and attached is a conceptual drawing of what they are planning, and if you've been through Lake Inspiration, you see they have added sidewalks through the park and built the bridge across the, um, the waterways. There will be some additional provisions put up down there and have, uh, walk, walking track around the park. Animal shelter. The drawing is, uh, at, architect, it's just, it's completed, sixty-five percent complete. We have funding from USDA, that's a hundred and forty thousand, and a CF grant pending, that's thirty-six thousand four hundred. That's some additional funds. St. Matthew's Streetscape. We awarded a bid for the Re-Serveting of FR Huff Drive. That should be beginning here shortly. The pocket park down by the town hall, seventy percent complete, and there's a tax, a conceptual drawing for you, and the guardrail along the railroad track from this side has been completed. Public safety and renovation for St. Matthew's Town Hall renovation, that's fifty percent complete. Cameron Downtown demolition. They had three buildings downtown Cameron that was demoed. That's complete. Calhoun County Emergency Communications is completed. Calhoun County Amelax is completed. Sandy Run Trumper Tank. The truck has been ordered and deposit paid. It's a twenty-four to twenty-eight month lead time to get that truck. There's additional funding from UDSA of fifty thousand. A CF grant is pending for twenty-four thousand. Total cost of the truck is five hundred forty-nine thousand, five hundred twenty dollars. At Sandy Run Recreation, the Haywood Park has been up and, and running with the upgrades. Equipment has been ordered for the Sandy Run complex, which is where the ball fields are, and additional funding is SCPRT and PAR grant, seventy-eight thousand, two hundred, two dollars and twenty-one cents. Calhoun County Waterline, Carol... Calhoun County Waterline, Caroline Lane Waterlines have been completed. Stabler Hill Road has been completed. We're looking at some other areas throughout the county, such as Fort Mark Copperhead Lane and some other lines in Sandy Run that will be put on this list. We have upcoming meeting to discuss what we're gonna be doing with those projects. If you have any questions, I have an answer. If not, I get back with the call hands. Do you have any questions?
I have a question. The projects that are in town, does that affect the historic district of the town in any way?
Which project? The Streetscape?
Any of the Streetscape. Okay. And my other question is, whose responsibility is it to maintain the projects in town? Like the, there's a facility over off of Agnes and Mac Street. Whose responsibility is it to maintain that town?
It's the town.
These were joint projects with the town.
Yes.
I was just wondering whose responsibility.
It's not the people thinking about spending money in the town of St. Matthew's.
No.
It's a joint project.
Yes, sir. All the town, the Cameron, all Sandy Run, all the money, all together. Yes, everybody's included and spending sales tax.
That's not us fixing up the town.
No, it's part of, it's the town, trying to tie these ones together.
Right.
But the town is responsible for most of their projects.
Right, got you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. I don't see any more appearances. No resolutions, no old business. Are there new business we have? The magistrate's scheduled approval. Does that even matter?
Yes, sir.
Here's, George Bloom has presented this schedule. He's St. Matthew's magistrate office on twenty-eight thirty-three Hope Elbeil Road. Will be open from Monday to Friday, nine AM, four PM. Joseph Teal, Sandy Run magistrate, seventeen twenty-four Old State Road, Gaston, South Carolina. Monday, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, nine to twelve, one to five. Cassandra Keller, Church, Cassandra Keller, she's a part-time county magistrate also. Thirteen thirteen Bridge Street, St. Matthew's. And she'll be open on Thursdays from nine until four. We can approve that, sir.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion, have you approved that magistrate?
Throw move.
I'll be moving second and further discussion. All who pay my, opposed likewise, eyes have it. Sheriff's Department funding request that...
So just to clarify, this is not a new funds request? I realize we got a new council, but the majority of you remember this past fiscal year, the current one that we're in. We had the one point four million dollar motor oil project overall for communication, public safety, all that. We had initially, I think, John and Richard had planned in thirty thousand dollars in the upstart fees, the collateral costs of things that would be kicking along. Well, we've blown through that pretty quick. Technology is what it is. We have all of the equipment that we need to have, but it would be kinda like me going out and buying a fighter jet, don't know how to drive it yet, kind of. Speaking with Robert Truesdale here, he was familiar with a company that he's used for the county, County Life stuff. It's a network and security company that would be dealing with implementation of some of this equipment, updating, then we'd be updated, making the connections, basically, so that the, everything talks together, basically, is what it would be. They have given me a proposal overall of seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars. That's a little bit fluid. There's some maintenance agreements and things like that that are in there that are still negotiable. We have the money at the sheriff's office within our existing budget. Besides the fact that we've got four to five empty deputy positions in our salary line, we also get reimbursements, as several of you know, from the school districts and from the state, from different pieces. So what I'm asking tonight is basically the authority given by y'all to basically transfer any funds within our existing budget to be able to, we don't foresee necessarily needing any additional funding, just to reallocate existing funds to cover the purchases, to get all of the segments that we go live with.
Chairman, I move that we allow for budget adjustments within the sheriff's department budget to cover the communication, whatever needs of, what the communication system online.
Can you have a second?
Second.
I'll be moving second and any further discussion. All who pay my, opposed likewise. Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks, thank you.
Down to the soil farm discussion. This conference cannot be reduced.
Yes, sir. Thank you, council. So as you've heard and as you see, we've got some good response. Asking council to hold off on moving forward with any solar projects right now. From my standpoint, certainly, there's a time and a place for solar. Certain areas of the county that aren't ag-heavy, non-industrial park sites, things of that nature. So certainly, with your permission, I'd like the ability to start the process, talking with our county attorney, and looking at the language for the new program.
Can I ask, I have a question. Can it be longer than six months for more hiring so that we can wait until the Comprehensive Plan is in place so that the community has a chance to put their input on how they would like the rest of the county to do?
We will certainly look into that, yes, ma'am.
I think what will happen is it will draw some language. We'll come back to county council discussion.
We'll share with all five of you first before we proceed.
Anyone else have, have anything?
I just want to let people of the county know that we aren't gonna look at this lightly. I wanna make sure everybody knows that I heard people say that they grew up in this county, they love this county. I think all five of us love this county.
Yeah, I got seven of you here, too.
We're not, I'm not gonna move, I'm not gonna sit in this seat and fleece Calhoun County for any kind of benefit that we don't own as a county. So I wanna reassure, I mean, I've gotten phone calls, I've gotten emails, and I appreciate those phone calls and emails. Because then it lets me go back, talk to the people I need to talk to, so we can move forward in the correct way. We can't just pull the fire alarm and go running around like a chicken with a head cut off. We have to move forward in the proper manner, and that's what I wanna make sure we do with this, with any project that comes to this county that people are concerned about. I won't let the people of the county know that that's where I stand, and that all of these council people here love the county. We're gonna move forward carefully, and for as far as I'm concerned, that's how I want to move forward with any county project that comes to this county. But I thank you for your concerns, and I thank the ones that have spoken, and I thank you for the emails and phone calls. Because it allows us to speak back to issues for the people of the county. Because that's who we do work, we all realize we work with the people of the county. I speak, I think I can speak for this council, and I say, "We do know who we work for." That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Susan made a good point. How we operate is, we can't just jump because somebody says something or emails. I made a comment to them up there just now, the chairman of the federal senate. He carries a flip phone because of emails. He don't like them. I don't like them either, I tell you. He called me, asked why this is my house number, listed, my cell, with all this emailing plus and stuff. I'm sitting, like the gentleman said earlier, because I've been here seven, three years also, like county captain of St. Matthew's. So yeah, sure, we care about it. I mean, that's why we're here. Not like we get paid millions of dollars to serve. I understand you, gentlemen, we, and this is not the only meeting we go through. Richard from John knows about you, that, you came back from leaving, they played the other night. I get these almost once a week or more, but I enjoy doing it because I got the time now, and I love Calhoun County. And that's why we're up there. Nobody wants to ram anything down anyone's throat, don't think that. But it's always two sides to a problem. We have to listen at both sides. It's just that simple. When we see a majority of the people, we've learned, when we see a majority of the people, when they want something, we're not gonna buck it. I don't think so, because like I say, I think we are there for the development of this county. Anyone else?
I would like for our county attorney to work closely with the environmental resource, such as Dr. Land and Burn Law Project or another one, to perform moving forward with this.
And let me, let me just say this about this soil farm thing. I talked with our representative four or five days ago, and the state is also looking at this thing. So it's not just people turning their eye to mine, but we have to take our time when we do things. So many entities are involved with this thing. But we are looking at, we're not gonna, if we can help it, nobody gonna hurt Calhoun County as long as I'm here. I can show you that. Down to, anybody else have anything? Ken? Are we down to ordinances? Orders twenty twenty-three dash one, second reading. An order is to amend Chapter Two, Article Five, Division Four of the Code of Orders. We thought it often will issue requires for various, various county contracts. Have a motion, second reading, pass. Any other things to clear?
I motion that we amend Sec. Orbit Number Twenty Twenty-three dash one, Section Two dash four five four, Number Four, and strike out fifty thousand and insert twenty thousand dollars and one cent.
Okay, y'all understand what she's saying?
And I second it.
You'll probably move it second, but y'all understand what she's saying, the rest of the council. We gotta explain it to you a little bit.
Yes, sir.
Everybody understand?
Sure.
Any further discussion? All who pay my, opposed likewise, eyes have it.
Who has a second?
I have a second.
Okay, down to the administrative.
We need to vote on the, with the, with the, oh, I'm sorry.
Wait, can we?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Orders Twenty dash, Twenty Twenty-three dash four, as amended.
What?
Oh, that's one. I'm sorry, my glasses. All right, that's one, as amended, with section, I mean, number four reading twenty thousand rather than fifty thousand.
Okay, do I have a second?
Sure.
I'll probably second. Any further discussion? All who pay my, opposed likewise, eyes have it. Thank you, y'all. Ken, do you have anything under the administrative? I mean, John, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. I'd like to reach out prayers, of course, for the families of Becky Furtick, our long-serving treasurer, as well as Mr. Maxwell Jenkins, Sheila's father, who passed away. That's why I've got this lovely one sitting beside me here. But nevertheless, I do wanna reach out to those two and keep them in our prayers. Also, council has been submitted the budget calendar for this year, and some dates to look at there. February seventeenth, we're gonna start prepping. The March tenth, receiving on back end from the department heads. And then we've got April the seventeenth to administration, and then we've got our workshop with county council on April the twenty-first. And so I do appreciate any remarks, questions you may have on that. And that's it for me. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that looks like it, except for the debate session.
Do you have some more?
Well, you go ahead and make your own evaluation.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to go into the next session for legal advice. RNC slash MUSC update and legal overview, economic matter, project Chateau, economic matter, project Cooper.
Second.
I'll be moving second. We probably won't be bringing anything out, if anybody wanna remain, can remain. If you'll come out and say you want to discuss a few matters, all who pay my, I.
Second.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.